Hi.
I should have brought my two little bits to get rid of.
How many did you say?
Forty percent or fifty percent.
Appreciate it.
Pardon?
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it, yes.
That's the, that's the point.
Appreciate it.
Pretty good play.
Some plays.
So, what are the thoughts?
Well, we come back to the service.
You said one part.
The zone.
I couldn't believe that.
Uh, we're gonna get so quiet. It answers. So, we're trying to figure out.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I was just wondering.
I guess.
Yep. Funded just to do this.
And they did.
Well, I know that.
I said, um, I'm.
Yeah. That's the most, that's the timing that.
And we have some personnel.
Back there. So, all right. Yeah.
Yes.
We're standing.
When you're going out.
What? Now, I'm just under that press.
Yes, sir.
At seven o'clock, call the word of the city council here in Ranza Pass. And six hundred West Queen Boulevard. Please stand up for location. For our nice people, thank you for a special day today, especially on all our little ones going back to school. Bless all the teachers, all the youngsters, make sure they should have a safe year with the abilities to learn what's, what's being taught to them. Give us a help and understanding to come up to get decisions for this evening, tonight's meeting. Help watch out over our elderly and the ones that aren't feeling so well. Please do a special blessing for them and if anybody had lost any special loved ones and those poor people that had that earthquake in California. Give a lot of thanks for a lot of things, just the, the day, for each day that comes and each night that goes by and also more privilege to have, to have the opportunity to meet all these wonderful people. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just bring us to item number three, the consent agenda. All of the following items of the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council. Will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of this item unless a council member so requests. The discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda, will be considered separately. We have items A and B.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. All fair to say aye?
Aye.
Aye. This will bring us to item number four. Considering that the consulting agreement between the City of Ranza Pass and Urban Safety Assessment LLC Texas Limited Liability Company herein referred to as USA regarding oil, gas, and mineral wells.
Mayor Council, Urban Safety Assessment is here to do a presentation and it's basically a inventory and action plan for all of the wells that we have in the City of Ranza Pass.
Thank you, Ms. Correll, Councilman and Mayor. Thanks for having us tonight. I'm Brent Wilson, this is my partner Steve Garsky. We represent Urban Safety Assessment, it's our wholly owned company that we've developed. The purpose of our presentation to you tonight is to show you what we can do for your community. Some of the things that we do, we begin with ordinance development for communities such as yourself to manage the oil and gas drilling asset or the production asset that occurs in your community. We, we implement those safeguards in those ordinances, we communicate with operators and drillers and with community and city leaders to develop the ordinance that's pertinent, the criteria for the ordinance pertinent, it really yields good tangible safety. We move from there into inspection phase. We start with the first year quarterly inspections and thereafter semi-annual inspections of general health, safety, and comfort criteria such as secondary containment, wind direction indicator, proper placarding, first responder preparedness, MSDS, proper insurance and bonding, make sure all that criteria is met. We do all this through an app that we developed. We can document time and date stamp on the actual inspection geographic location guarantee and time and date stamp guarantee. And then we can attach picture or video to that so that we verify that. We move into, from the inspection, an ancillary benefit of that is that when we do a boots-on-the-ground inventory or inspection of all facilities in your jurisdiction, we also compare that with the tax rule. In every case that we've come across, we have always found assets improperly coded generally or sometimes just simply omitted from the tax rules. And this yields direct tangible benefit for the city in the form of tax levy. To date, we've found five hundred and thirty-five million dollars worth of assets that weren't properly coded or not, or that were omitted from tax rules. We also have some expertise in annexation. We've developed a methodology to encourage annexation through the voluntary process that develops revenue stream for the city and for the property owner. We use a developer's agreement for, as a vehicle for that to facilitate. And in all this process and everything that we do, the council has control, we simply bring the recommended criteria to you, whether it be in the ordinance development, the inspection criteria, the annexation, all those things, we bring that criteria to you and we give recommendations on which direction to lead with these measures to the city. We try to remain as much as we can a disinterested third party during the inspection process. The idea is not to hit these operators over the head. They can be good residents. They don't tax your city services, your city sewer, your water, your police and fire, that's minimal. And they can pay significant tax dollars. They can coexist with the residents, but we take a management overview of that and try to facilitate that so that you can allow that development of that mineral estate while protecting the self pace, excuse me, health, safety, and comfort of your residents and quantify the impact on your infrastructure, on your streets and all of your citizens. That's what we do, we try to wrap it up in a package that when we bring it to you, you have one or two decisions to make, you act on it, move forward with it. We've spent considerable time driving around and looking at some facilities that are in your community and, and they do need some regulation. They do.
Did you touch on the cost to the city that's gonna be?
What do we recommend on cost structure to the city? Most cities that we work with generally charge an inspection fee to the operator annually and that's a pass-through cost, the city tax on an administrative fee so that can actually become a revenue generator for the city instead of a cost. And then with the discovered assets that are not currently on the tax roll, that again develops another revenue stream for you. And here's some examples here, I don't know if you have the angle to see these or not, but of some of the compliance on the low end and the high end, what we're looking for. You can see the site there on the left, very, very poor secondary containment, absolutely no fencing. The site on the right is a site in Wise County that's in a floodplain and you'll see all the structures are elevated, there are significant fencing and containment around that structure and then an exterior, your fence is well. The primary goal that we look at when we, when we look at these sites, can children access this site? Can they wander in there? And that's the primary thing we look at. We move from that to secondary containment, if there's an event, a lightning strike, a fire, where's that spill gonna go to? How far can it migrate from that site? The well inspection report, as I said, it's time, date, location stamped and it's sent to the city staff, first responders, well operator, whoever you authorize us to send that to. And again, that's all seamless, wireless, no paper, it's, it's just sent to you in email format and you have the attached pictures or video to verify that these are conditions at these times. And we find that that's a value-added thing even to an operator because in the event of a lawsuit or an incident, they have a record of compliance. We do try to build a database of compliance or non-compliance as quickly as possible. That's why we like four inspections the first year. We find, even on some of these higher-end sites, we find some deficiencies and we meet with that operator, we review all the criteria, show them the direction we wanna go. And in some cases, we've even been able to help that operator set costs by, by removing some arduous restrictions that the current regulations, current ordinance had in place. You know, if it doesn't yield. Community, then it's just not necessary. And so, again, we try to take that overview of a management of the asset beneath your feet and try to get the most out of it for you by allowing those operators to develop it. But at the same time, ensure that due diligence has been performed by the city to guarantee the health, safety, and comfort of the residents.
Do any of the wells that we have on site now, do they turn anything to the city?
Yes, they're through their, through the taxing entities. I think what is important for them to understand is for us initially, there is no cost. I mean, you guys are gonna go out, you're gonna investigate, you're going to.
The only upfront, out-of-pocket cost that you guys have is ordinance development. And your ordinance, your current operating about nineteen sixty. We feel like the window to review those ordinances is three to five years because that's a rapidly evolving field and new technologies, new practices, new techniques come online and if you don't stay abreast of it, you just get behind it. Nineteen sixty, there certainly wasn't the technology they have today. So, ordinance development, that would be an upfront cost, that's generally recouped with one or two permits. And we do an industry-wide analysis, a community, a regional analysis to find out what the benchmark for permit pricing and inspections and try to, to guide you to stay within that. And so generally, ordinance development is recouped with one or two permits.
And, and the other costs are basically pass-through costs to the well operators.
That's correct. If we don't discover any assets, there's no cost to you. If we don't help you with annexation, there's no cost to you. And so, we try to, we built a whole program to be a net revenue generator for a city. To give you, I guess in a nutshell, we assimilate a lot of information and try to get it in a usable format for you guys so that when these operators come back and they wanna drill another well, you can make a logical decision instead of an emotional decision. And you can, you can showcase your compliance or non-compliance of your operators there too.
How many wells do we currently have together?
It's difficult to tell. We, we estimate fifteen to twenty.
Twenty live wells, few of them plugged and abandoned wells.
There's a tremendous amount.
Probably twenty to thirty.
A tremendous amount of plugged wells and that's become a real issue with the railroad commission of late. You have to remember that there's a separation of the surface and mineral state and the mineral state takes precedence for development. So, an operator can come in and use a site for years and years and years. And it's important to, to develop that database of compliance or non-compliance so that when that's returned. If he wants to put a convenience store, a daycare, we know where that plugged well is and we know if there were any events that might require a level three or environmental impact study, any of those things. If there was ever a spill, if there was ever a, you know, a pipeline rupture on that place, a fire, any of those types of things, you've got a, you've got a database there to go back through to say, are there any things we need to be looking for? And where is that? Cause there are a lot of them down here on the Gulf Coast that were drilled, they produce them, get the flush off of them, plug them and walk off from them. And they may be five years old, they may be fifty years old, you just don't know. Now, those dead wells, plugged and abandoned wells, very difficult to go locate those. And our recommendation on that is that you just use railroad commission information to manage that so that as development comes along, you can look at that and say, well, is this an area that there are P and A wells in that we need to, to be looking for?
Those wells that are kept off, they can always come back and rinse the state on.
Generally, if they're very old, it's cheaper just to drill a new well. And the school on most of these wells now unplugged and abandoned is about four foot below the surface. Up in the Barnett Shale in Fort Worth, you actually have a five-foot radius around that monument on that wellhead that you can't build in. So, you actually have plugged and abandoned wells inside yards between houses where houses are twenty-five feet apart, you have a plugged well between them. Any other questions?
Thank you.
No, I was just kinda wondering how many we had and he answered that for me.
All right. You said that?
All right.
Appreciate it, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Is there a motion for approval for item number four?
Hey Sylvia, just to kinda clarify before we go any further, what does this cost us to do any of this? Nothing?
In the beginning, the ordinance development, the ordinance language itself, there is gonna be some, there are costs associated if you see your, your agenda.
Right.
But those, once the ordinance is amended, those are costs that are passed through in the permit of a well or in the safety review of the well, the things that they have to do. Do you wanna address that? So, if they go and they find a well and it's not.
Up to.
It looks like.
Sure. No.
It looks like the well that was shown here.
We can go back and.
Yes.
Attach it to the customer.
Adopt into an ordinance. We do not write your ordinance for you.
Correct.
But we research all those industry standards and we, we have even met with operators in different plays and we bring that information back to your city attorney. He'll develop that ordinance and then we implement the, the criteria and the ordinance into the new inspections. We do recommend that you pass that cost on to the operators. And in the wells that we've seen, there's, there's a pretty good pattern of non-compliance that exists right now with the wells in your community. And, you know, there, I think section nineteen thirty-five or four states that all equipment will be painted annually and that there will be, you know, fences sufficient to keep everything out. So, there's a pretty good pattern on compliance at this point. And again, the, the purpose is not to hit these guys over the head, it's to get them into compliance. And we recommend that you set it up where there's not a cost to the, to the city, where the operators pay for the inspections, you put administrative fees on that, a hundred and fifty bucks.
But who's gonna set those, uh, this ordinance? Who's, who's the one that's gonna make up the rules? We'll bring criteria to you.
For your attorney to review.
You guys ultimately adopt it.
We'll.
But who's initially gonna make the, who's the one that's gonna say?
We'll work with, we'll work with them to draft the ordinance.
Between them.
Do you, the few decisions that you'll have to make, which are generally setbacks, fees, just different craps of criteria that are important to you, we'll bring it to you in a workshop form and you'll, you'll complete the worksheets. How much of a cost is it for you to make all those ordinances? The research and.
Ordinance development, I would estimate that between four and twelve thousand dollars. And that's the only cost that is upfront capital cost to you. And then, of course, whatever your attorney costs to put that in a legal form, cause we just bring the criteria to you.
I have a question to put my, Mayor. You're talking about passing these costs on to the operators. Those are for future permits, are they not?
I would, I would pass, I would implement it for existing wells. I would, I would recommend that you start charging a fee schedule on the existing wells because it, it costs money to, to inspect those wells and to maintain that, that compliance.
What do you guys do in other cities when you come into a city like Ranza Pass that is, that we've got wells that are not contained, that are not safe, not painted, not?
And generally. I know the reservation is grandfathered wells. And generally, what we've, what we've been able to do is work with these operations, say, look, guys, you're so out of, you're so far out of compliance right now, they can shut you down. And that's not the intent. Let's put some real tangible things in this ordinance that benefit the operator, that allow them to develop that mineral estate. And one of those is a pad site permit where they get a pad site permit and they know they can drill in the future and operators really like and embrace that. And so, it's a give and take situation. And we, we approach it from that standpoint.
So, what has been, been the, in the past, like going into cities or towns like Ranza's Pass, the, the timeframe that they have allowed the, the, you know, the oil, the companies to bring them up to par? What has been, do we, is it been a month, six months, a year, or what has been the timeframe?
Generally, you can get compliance in the first year. There are some extreme cases in this area that might take longer. But again, when you look at the whole overview of what we're trying to do here, it's not to go out there and get your code in. Tickets and collect a bunch of fines, that's not the, that's not the purpose. And when you demonstrate to those operators, we're really not carrying a stick trying to hit you guys, we're trying to gain compliance, we're trying to build this into a manageable situation, you can generally get them to go along. You can generally get them to go along.
There will be some pushback.
There's, there always is. But when they're looking, when they're faced with a situation that they're so far out of compliance that they're looking at being shut down, that's a significant asset that they have in those wells, and so they'll come into compliance most generally.
The fifteen or twenty wells that you said are in Aransas Pass, do you know where ownership from those is stemming from? Do y'all guys have any idea?
Not in each case, but in, generally, yes, we know who owns the wells. We know the operators.
Local, non-local?
They're statewide operators. The large operators are statewide operators. They actually have some shale wells up in the Barnett play. And there are wells up there that I'm familiar with or in compliance, and they're nice. And they're more like the site on the right that we showed you. But there's a different tolerance everywhere you go for what they're expect, the level of performance that they're expected to meet. So when you, when there's just benign, you get into a situation where you have a dangerous situation that exists.
Okay, you keep referring to the right, is the one in the left in Aransas?
It's nearby.
It's nearby, okay. Staff, staff really does not have the expertise, and I'm not even going to pretend to have the expertise on how to monitor, how to do any of that. And I venture to tell you, nobody on staff does.
I guess my biggest reservation is I want to be able to collect that twelve, between four to twelve thousand dollars back as quickly as possible.
Where's it going to put us worse than the red?
Are you, are you including the wells out in the bay in this program?
There are some wells that are in the bay that are in your jurisdiction, and set of criteria. And obviously, those inspections would be a little different format, but we will include those. Yes, sir.
Say one of the wells has leaked, then how much money does it cost the city? If we don't start working to get compliance, the wells that we have already?
I think they're probably insured and bonded, especially the ones out in the bay.
Generally, they should be insured and bonded, and the operator would bear the cost of that.
And again, that's one of the things we do, is verify it.
Bonding and verifying insurance. The scary thing on some of these is, some of these ordinances we see allow those operators to self-insure. And so that's a slippery slope when you get there. But the real benefit to the city is the improved aesthetics and the improved safety that you can achieve. It just ups the property value for everything around it.
So my question is, if this is something that council approves, do we have the funds set up for this? Initial? No, the initial funds have not been identified.
Is it imperative we get started on this right away, or can we...
Can we table it until we find the money?
Sure, because I don't, I can't tell you where it's coming from today. We're not doing inspections right now. I, you know, you can send us back to look for, you know, twelve thousand dollars. I guess I need a rougher estimate or closer estimate on...
Ordinance development on those costs, you know, we can, we can keep that to a minimum as much as we can. I give you a pretty wide range, I just don't want to mislead you into, you know, if we had to have more and more meetings with operators, then it's travel cost, and there's just different costs. But I would think that it would be the lower end of the spectrum. If you want a tighter range, you know, if you do a five-year agreement with us, we'll do, we'll give you a range of four to six thousand dollars for our cost on it. And again, that should be recouped with one or two permits. And hopefully, some of the things we implement could encourage some new permits, new drilling. So if you want a tighter range, you know, if you want to do a five-year deal with us, then we'll, we'll keep it between the four and six thousand dollars.
See, but I think the reservation from them and for me is, number one, I don't know enough, so I can't explain enough. They don't know enough, and so I think probably the prudent thing to do is to send us back and...
Are y'all good enough to be able to put up the money upfront, and then when we start making money, y'all pay yourselves, and then we make the rest?
With a, with a five-year agreement, right?
If we're good enough, we can do it, right?
You know, the ordinance development is the first thing that we start on. And we can't operate without a good ordinance. You guys can't gain compliance without a good ordinance. We can, we can do some inspections on the ordinance that you have, but it's very outdated and very sparse. And I'd recommend a complete overhaul of it. But again, I can't guarantee that we'll find assets that are not on your tax roll, but we have not seen a situation yet where we haven't found assets that have been added to that tax roll. And so that alone can offset a lot of those costs. I spent six years on the Board of Directors on an appraisal district in Weiss County, Texas, where there are significant oil and gas infrastructure there. And the chief appraiser, I had a conversation about a month ago, and he said that he thinks statewide about eighty-five percent of it gets appraised. And that's pretty well industry standard because they're really, you as a city contract with whichever of the three appraisal districts you choose here, and they contract with probably Capital or Pritchard and Abbott to do a mass appraisal. And it's the economy of scale, it's what you can afford. They pick up the dollars, we come behind them, we pick up the quarters and nickels. And there are a lot of quarters and nickels out there. And so we try to use that to help offset some of that cost. But to answer your question on the upfront cost, we can keep that in the scope of between four and six thousand dollars if you guys want to, if you want to go ahead and get started on it.
I think we ought to just table this until we can get more details. There's still a lot of gray areas here that we don't know about. That's just my personal thoughts.
As far as right now, this is the only company that's going to us, right, to do this type of inspection for here, to Aransas?
Yes.
But there are not other companies that do the ancillary things that we do on the taxes, the jurisdiction, or the annexations, and the, help you develop the ordinance, they're just not. We try to take that view from ten thousand foot. And I've sat in your chair, I was a mayor of a small town for ten years. I know the impact that it can have on a community. And so we built the whole program as just a management program to quantify that and to be able to make good decisions.
I guess one of the questions I have is something like this, we have to put out a newspaper for RP to see if there's more companies like this to help us, or can we move on with just them without testing the waters, or, you know, just a bunch of questions?
Whatever you direct me to do.
How did this come about?
They approached us.
They approached us.
And we, like I said, I'm not at all versed in, neither is anybody on the staff at all.
I think we need to study it more so we can make a wise decision.
Yes, if they put up the money upfront. Give you a candy bar? No, I have enough. We can table it for the next meeting.
Can we table it for the next meeting?
Can I make a motion? We table this till the next meeting?
I second it.
Will we have, would that be enough time? The next meeting is...
Next meeting's on the second. We will at least have more, more information.
I do appreciate your time coming up here.
You can look at our website, it's USAssessment.com. We'll leave you some contact information. If you've got questions, our contact information's on there, feel free to contact us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So do I hear a second? You got one? On Thursday, aye?
This will bring us to item number five, consider an act with LNV Engineering Change Order Number One for Construction Contract Regarding Matlock Waterline Replacement Project.
Mayor and Council, this is, this is a grant project on Matlock that's extending the water line. There are ten hydrants that were not included in the original bid amount, and you guys asked us to go back and find that, and we found it from prior bond savings. And so that, that is this change order for an additional ten fire hydrants along the north side.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I think Ms. Corio gave you a good overview of the item. I'm just here to answer any additional questions that you may have.
How long was the project? How many feet?
I don't have the exact footage in front of me. Council, hi. The original dollar amount was two hundred and eighty-six thousand, about one hundred and seventy-three dollars. The proposed change order before you is for forty-nine thousand dollars, which is ten hydrants at four thousand nine hundred dollars apiece, which gives you a seventeen-point-one percent increase. There is, because of the time restraints in meeting the grant requirements, there is no additional contract time included in this change order. As work is progressing, it appears that we will still meet the time restraints that we're working on.
And Sylvia, these forty-nine thousand, we found the money in a prior bond?
From the elevated water storage. That'll help us also with our ISO rating on the fireside. That was one of the things that we got gigged on.
Okay.
If I may, the original scope of the grant did include these fire hydrants. It's just as we got into preliminary estimates and looking at costs, it did not appear that we had adequate funding to do the entire scope of the project. But as we've been progressing and the project's going well enough to where there's been no need for any other change orders, and as Ms. Corio mentioned, we did want to go back and complete the entire scope of the original grant. And with some work, they have identified additional funding to complete what is considered the original scope of the project. It's not that we're increasing the scope, we're just trying to complete what was originally proposed.
What is the timetable, looking at for total completion?
At their current rate, there have been some issues with some broken water services and so forth, but overall, they're still progressing ahead of schedule. There was ninety calendar days set up for the contract beginning in July, so we're still looking probably all total, probably mid to late September, which still gets us in within the grant timeframe.
We're fast running out of time.
Yeah. So it's tied, it was tied from the beginning. It is originally a twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve CD grant, so it was somewhat, you could call it a late start. So it was a very compressed project timeframe once it actually got going. But the short answer to your question, we are on track to finish within the time requirements.
Well, I guess I'll make a motion, we can, we approve the work order change for number one on the Matlock waterline project.
Second motion.
On Thursday, aye?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
This will bring us to item number six, consider an act on waiving the Aransas Pass Housing Authority utility bills in dispute.
Have representative from the Housing Authority? Mayor and Council, the Housing Authority has a high bill during a billing period. The staff investigated the bill when the dispute first arose. There was notes put in the system, we tested the meter, you know, it is staff's contention that the bill is a valid bill, given the investigation that was received, the people that we questioned, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We did meet with the Housing Authority on the bill, and they've asked for it to be presented to the council on forgiving the water bill. Upon the investigation, we found it not being billed for sewer either on that bill. It is, it is an account that's used for make-ready for the other, the other apartments in the complex. And so staff does not have the authority to waive a bill. And again, it's important to understand that every dollar that passes through the meters, the city of Aransas Pass pays the San Trishell Water District for.
How much money are we looking at on that?
A thousand eighteen dollars and fourteen cents.
Do I hear a recommendation or motion for a denial of the request?
Well, I do make a motion that we deny the request of the Housing Authority.
Second.
On Thursday, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there a way that Sylvia just said...
There is a payment plan option available. We are going to go back and review that account because it is set up as a sprinkler account and not receiving sewer fees, so that the bill in general is going to be raised to the minimum levels. But we're more than willing to work out a twelve-month payment plan.
Okay, I'd like to see that.
This will bring us to item number seven, consider an act on request of Chris's Marine for two thousand dollars from the HOT funds for the twenty-fourteen Hating Owners Tournament held on September fifth through the seventh at twenty-fourteen.
Mayor and Council, Chris from Chris's Marine is here to tell you about the tournament. I will tell you that the HOT funds do not have two thousand dollars in it, but if council so wishes, the Harbor Fund has two thousand dollars in it that can be allocated.
Does it have to be put on the agenda as that, since we only have HOT funds?
No, you would amend, you would say, don't take it from HOT, take it from a stipulated account.
Last year, we had close to four hundred actual members in the tournament. This year, as of this afternoon, when we close the shop down, we have a hundred and eighty-six teams, which have already paid their registrations. Twenty-six of the teams are local people that are from here, the rest are from out of town. And we figured last year, from what we've talked to people, seventy-five to eighty percent of them stayed here four days at a weekend, came in on a Thursday, left that Sunday. We're expecting, hopefully, to break the two-fifty mark, which will put us right at a thousand members in the tournament, plus whoever they bring. We are going to have a boat we're giving away this year. We've moved up, moved up, moved up. The boat's valued at sixty-five thousand dollars that we're giving away. The guy that wins the tournament doesn't have to win, you know, catch the biggest fish, we're going to do a drawing for it. So their kid could win it, you know, one of y'all could win it, but you have to have a haney boat that's built here locally. We are going to have NBC Sports Thursday, they're actually going to be at my shop on maybe Thursday, which is going to be a cluster down there. But it is going to be real good for Aransas Pass to actually be, you know, it is an ESPN, some kind of weird channel, you gotta...
The Ocho.
And it's going to be NBC Sports that's going to be here. We're going to have a helicopter in the air Saturday morning for takeoff on all the boats up down here. We're going to actually try to, with weather permits, Saturday, have a video out of the helicopter because we're going to make everybody weigh in at the harbor and hope to have close to a thousand haney of the boat. And hope to have close to a thousand haney of the boats I've built in the harbor with a good picture this year. Y'all can help us with the money, y'all can help us.
I'm definitely not going to leave Matt if y'all say no.
Because the tournament will go through, you know, with y'all, and I will, you know, represent Aransas Pass to the fullest, there's no doubt, it will never leave this town. Basically, that's it in a nutshell. We are going to pack that town this week, that weekend, and it's September 5th and 6th. The fifth is going to be pretty much a party down there, we're going to have a band. I'm going to do the captain's meeting at seven o'clock, then I'm getting out of there. Rudy's Redfish Trail is stepping in, they're going to have their trailer there. They'll be there to actually do the weigh-in for the fish, so there ain't no questions asked. We are going to do a lie detector test this year. We had several of our pro team members kind of fought down there with each other, saying that people were cheating and stuff like that, so we're just going to cut it, you know, in a nutshell, they're going to take a test when they're done. You know, and I know everybody likes Steve at this guy's place. Hopefully, we can all stay together like y'all been helping us, you know, I'm asking for two thousand. I know last year, Mike asked for ten thousand or whatever it was, I don't need that much money. You know, I can use five hundred if that's all y'all can come up with. You know, whatever y'all can throw in, I'll definitely have y'all's name already on the shirts y'all going on there if I don't participate with the money. You know, I just basically need a little bit of help. You know, we did have some big players step in this year, so they're taking pretty much the cost of everything to a minimum, you know, besides the boat I came up with, but hopefully, we can get through it and have a real good weekend if the weather don't blow us out like it did one year. If y'all got any questions for me, fire away.
How many actually stay in Aransas Pass? I'm thinking about the hotels. I know we are fully limited as far as...
Pretty much, you know, we filled them all last year because of whatever happened down here. But a lot of them, I'm not going to lie, they go to Port Aransas, they go to Rockport, and a lot of them do have houses here too, you know, that actually, actually customers of mine that do have houses, Pelicans Cove and you name it. So I can't tell you where they stay. You know, I know they came, you know, come to Aransas Pass, and Friday night, for sure, they eat here, and Saturday, I don't know where all they go. I know they're tired by the time we're done. I do too.
Yeah, that's why you can't get there on Saturday morning.
But we are... I always do something for them, every one of them gets something. This year, we're going to have an extra special, Jay Watkins. Not as far as fishing around here. He's been on my pro team for about ten years now, and brought me from down here to pretty much the sky. You know, and I won Team of the Year for the Redfish Series. We won seven tournaments straight from here to Louisiana, me and my partner, and that's what brought NBC Sports into here. They want to film me and my partner, and they heard about this haney deal, and they see hanies at every tournament that's up and down this coastline, and they want to know why. So, you know, more power to them, but they're going to spread the word about Aransas Pass, let them do it. You know, we always thought what... Well, I'll make a motion, we approve Mr. Coulter's request for two thousand dollars from the Harbor Funds For The 2014 Haney Owners Tournament From September 5th Through 7th, 2014.
I second the motion.
On first say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Chris, appreciate it. So number eight, we have Consider An Act On Rescheduling The Monday As September 1st, 2014 City Council Meeting To Tuesday, September 2nd, 2014 Due To A City Holiday. Make the motion. Make the motion to reschedule the regular meeting of the Aransas Pass City Council From Monday, September 1st To Tuesday, September 2nd, 2014.
And I second it.
Due to a...
Holiday.
City holiday. Will we have a second?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Who's second?
I need to get out of here.
No, that's fine, that's fine. Do you have a ride?
Eric.
Somebody?
He can give me a ride.
Let's go picture in front of the squad.
It's going to be the front seat, right?
Paul's seat you gotta have where the...
I always ride in the back, chamber size.
Thank you, Billy, appreciate you coming out.
All right, thanks, I'll take my candy. Thanks, Dad.
Hey, Billy, they'll be waiting right up front for you.
In front? Okay.
This will bring us to item number nine, Consider An Act Of The Ranses Pass Building Department Items Which Ays Appointed Members To The Planning And Zoning Board.
Well, Mayor, we have three open slots on planning and zoning. We have three current commissioners who applied. We did advertise to the general public. The three applicants are Lisa Barker, Pat Fenton, and Shirley Gallagher.
So she make it easy then? Is there any questions on the three that are applying? Brad? So do I hear a motion to approve the three?
I make a motion that we appoint Lisa Barker, Shirley Gallagher, and Pat Fenton to the planning and zoning.
I second.
On first say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
They all have very good attendance, just that way.
That's good.
Okay, good.
Very good.
Okay, B, item B is Correction Of The Minutes Of The City Council Meeting June 16th, 2014. Item 8B, Mr. Gene Seaman's Legal Description Of The Plan Development Originally Described As S/2, Track 1 And 9, Track 2 All Of Track 34, Land Block B, Burton And Danforth, S/D, thirty-three point sixty-six acres. The corrected legal description is the property being described as thirteen point two zero acres of land Out Of Lots 1, 2, And 3, Block B, Burton And Danforth Subdivision. A map which is recorded in Volume 1, Pages 62 Through 63. Map records, Aransas County, Texas. And being out of a thirty-three point six-six acre tract of land described in the deed Recorded On File Number 444086. Real property records of San Patricia County, Texas, also known as plat of Captain Coles, PDB Unit 1.
And all of that is really just correcting an error that we had in the legal description. So before we can move on to accepting the PUD document, we have to make sure the legal description is correct and advertised, and everybody knows that we're talking about the same piece of property.
Well, I make a motion that we accept the correction of the minutes regarding to the item 8B.
Second.
There'll be item 9B, right?
Yes.
And 9B?
Correcting the legal description of Captain's Cove, PDB Unit 1.
Yeah, it's the item 8B that's on here. But it's 9B on this one, correcting on 8B.
This will bring us to item C. Go ahead, move it to the second. All first say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right, I'll bring this to Mr. Watts.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item on the agenda is item 9C, Which Is A Public Hearing To Consider The Application Submitted By Alpha Seaman LTD To Replant The Approved Planning Or Plan Development Property, Which Is That Property That Was Just Discussed On The Corrected Legal Description. Is Ms. Seaman present?
Mr. Seaman is not present, but his representative, Chip Urban With Urban Engineering, is present for any questions.
Tilt it up soon. Here you go.
My name is Chip Urban, Urban Engineering, 27 and 25 Swatner, Corpus Christi. And Mr. Seaman couldn't be here tonight, but I'm here to answer questions best I can.
The planning commission and the council have seen this application. It is a modification of lot sizes, smaller lot sizes to get an increased density. Mr. Seaman is also taking advantage of the ribbon curb component, not to do underground drainage, and the rest of it meets all of the regular standards. So we amended the lot size and the drainage.
Members of the council, have any questions?
No.
No.
Thank you. You've seen the plat, I believe, have you not?
Yes.
Thank you, Chip.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who is opposed to the application for replant? If not, then I declare the public hearing closed.
I bring this to item D, Consider An Act On Application Submitted By Alpha Seaman LTD For The Replant. For her approval.
I make a motion that we approve the application by Seaman LTD.
I second.
On first say aye?
Aye.
This brings us to item E, Consider An Act On Request Of Mr. Gene Seaman, Captain Coles Addition Saunders Lane For Fifty Percent Participation On Cost For Water And Sewer Improvements Stolen Ninety-four thousand five hundred sixty-three dollars, which is the city's portion. The city's portion will be forty-seven thousand two eighty-one fifty cents.
Again, this is a, this is a public-private partnership, not unusual. He's asking for participation for those water sewer lines, it's going to open up that development that will end up opening further development to the south for the city At A Request Of Forty-seven Two Eighty-One. And also, that would be coming from also bond savings.
Is there any questions on this?
And just so you understand, that's based on an estimate. If that price comes in lower, then it's lower, and the cost is not to exceed that amount of money. So we can always pay less, we just can't pay more.
Well, I make a motion that we approve the request of Mr. Gene Seaman, Captain Coles Addition Saunders Lane For Fifty Percent Participation For The City's Portion Not To Exceed Forty-seven thousand two eighty-one fifty.
Second the motion.
On first say aye?
Aye.
This brings us to item number 10, Consider An Act Of The Ranses Pass Police Department On Items A And B. Ms. Black?
Yes, Mayor, item A is to renew the memorandum of understanding with the Texas Gang. That's a database that we use to document gang members that we encounter on the job. It's also a database where we can get activity updates and stuff of these gang bangers as they're caught by other agencies and jurisdictions across the state. We've been using them now, since I've started here, we started with them, it just needs renewal. The second MOU is for the DEA, renewing our contribution or partnership with them And Providing Them With Two Task Force Officers That Assist With Federal Investigations. They likewise assist in local investigations as well. And it's an inside door that we have into federal resources That Otherwise We Would Not Have Direct Access To. So it's just renewing that MOU as well. They like to renew that one, like on three-year periods, we just renewed it last year, but every year, they keep doing it again, they want to update it every year, no matter the term that was agreed to, and it is cancelable if needed with thirty days.
I hear a motion for approval both A And B?
Well, I make a motion that we approve both memorandum of understanding Between The Aransas Pass Police Department And The Texas Gang Intelligence Index And The Memorandum Of Understanding With The Drug Enforcement Agencies.
I second.
On first say aye?
Aye.
Bring us to item number 11, Consider An Act On Approving The Chamber Of Commerce Items, Which Is A 2014 Through 2015 Budget And B Of 2014 Through 2015 Contract.
I'm here tonight to present the budget for the 2014-2015 For Next Year And Also The Contract That The Hotel Is With, This Is The Agenda That Is Set Up On The Board. Before I Do She Be The Budget, I'd Like To Present To Y'all The Year On The Hotel, The Hotel Five Four Four. Full Start Of This And Our Presentation. And Just To Kind Of Give Y'all Some Information On What We Do. The New Advertisements That We Do Based On Billboards, Commercials, Radio, All Those Things We Do, The New Editions. We Start In March, In April With The New Campaign, And Then We Get Heavy Through May, June, July, August, And Then We Start Papering Down To Where It's Getting With Here. And Then Over Here, Can You Put My... Over Here You'll See Where We're At And What We're Doing. You'll See The Same In Hundred Market, Billboards And Banners. This Is A Billboard. This Is Nine Two, The Billboard That We Do Separately To See. This Is The Billboard That We Do In March With The Chambers Contract. So There's A Billboard There And Two Banners. And We're Also Now In The Dallas Sports Market Based On Some Of The Requests From This Day Last Year. Other Than Austin, Houston, Belmont, Victoria, And In The Valleys. So Those Are The Billboards Are On The Radio And TV. The Media Promotions, Aransas Pass Advertising, It's All Media Above Plus The Corpus Christi And Coastal Bay. We Do Radio On Mountain, Third Channel, Bad Rans, Gang Event Act, And I Don't Want To Do Based On Events That We Do Or The Radio We Do. Right Now We Have Something In Different Terms That's Going On In Town. And Then The TV Stations That We Do Through Here, Victoria, And Then In Hundred And Austin. Newspapers, Call And Times, The Progress, In People's Side, Vaco Pilot, Victoria Advocate, Imperial, D County Press, Coastal General. Local Magazine, We Do The Texas Now Magazine, We Did A Joint Venture With The City With The Year To Be The Texas Magazine Magazine. Except The First Hit On That, The First Six Months Based On The Situation With Hot Funds Right Now. So We Did The First, That's Another Doing That Right Now. We're Also In The Eagle Ford Shell Market Trying To Tap Into The Victoria Market. The Wall Of The Eagle Ford Shell, And Then The San Pat E C Guide, The Visitor Guide, And The Flight Center, Rat Parks. It's A Mass. The Flight Center We Built, Rat Parks And About Three Years Ago. Those Go To The Eagle Ford Of Texas As Well. And We've Been Doing Some Stuff With The Flight Center Trying To Help Them Get Some Revenue Out There. We've Pretty Much Passed Off Some Of Our Suburbiares That Go To The Park Center, Our Beach House, And That Sort Of Stuff Over The Flight Center To See If There's A Source Of Revenue For That Matter. The Boards That We Built For The Chamber That Means The Shurpree We're Now Using To Help Market Events, Any Other Event That's Happening In Aransas Pass, As Well As Like The Movies That We're Doing In The State. And A Little Bit Of Work For The Staff, They Certainly Love A Little Bit When They Have To Do It, But They're Out There Doing It. And Then Pressure With This Same Time Do Something Like It's Been Being Put Off. And Like I Said Again, The Visitor Guide And The Rat Parks Go Out All The Four And Two Points That's Pretty Regularly. They Call Regularly That We Run Out. We Have A Really Nice Visitor Center Guide, It's Very Big And Bold And Colorful, So There's A Lot Of Revenue For That Guide. We Read That Night Every Year, In January, We're, I Just Got The Updates, And Went For The Flight Center, Rat Parks. So That Will Be Changed Down In January. And Those We Do In January, We Get Them Ready For The Shows That We Do, Because We're Doing The Dallas Sports Market Trade Shows. We Do Some Trade Shows. And There's A List Of Some Of The Guides That We're Doing. That's A Whole List In There. And Then Those Are The New Boards That Are Up, You All Probably Seen. Every Board That We Have, If We Do The Ones That We Have In The Chambers Contract, Have Moved To That Board. That's What We're Using Right Now. And I Think They Look Pretty Good.
I saw that, I liked it. That orange really pops.
When We Take Down The Shurpree One Coming Into Town? Is That About To Tell Us That This Week?
We Can Tell Them To Take It Down, But We're Not Paying For It Anymore. It Just Days Up I Guess Until They Rent A New One. stays up, I guess, until they rent a new one. So that, I mean, we can tell them.
I just asked somebody, they asked me at the restaurant, hey, are there people coming in? And that was, that was a while back.
Yeah, I know, I know. We can tell them, but we can try to switch it out. Maybe they'll leave it up if we just pay for the vinyl. Because Lamar's really good with us, if we want a board up. Sometimes if they have an empty board, they'll just say, just pay for the vinyl and we can switch it off to something else. Or was that what you had?
Well, before you get to Ranses Park, right by the fairgrounds.
Oh.
Yeah, that one right there.
And then these are our postcards that we did. One of them is a picture that Bill was planning to let me use for the visitor center. When people come in, they, obviously they take postcards with them to send in their families. And then we have the lighthouse and the shrimpery, the shrimpery. That's some artwork from the shrimpery. And then see, these are some of the partnerships that we have, mostly for the visitor centers that we like to have some reports and any other partnerships to have this coming along with the visitor center. These are some analytics from Google. You can use that. Okay, that's last year. That would be the year before, where it said 145,000 KPs. And you'll see all the cities on there. I don't know if y'all can see them, but it tells you the top 10 cities that are looking at our town. And that was 2013, and I'm giving you this because I want to give you a comparison. This one has Corpus Christi, Houston, San Antonio, Dallas, Austin, Ranses Pass, Ingle Side, and New York. We actually had 3,700 hits from New York. I don't know what was going on, that somebody was looking at our area for something, but, and then Portland. And then you can move on. And then this one, you can tell the same time of year, same date, 158,000. We had 20,000 hits between last year and this year. So we're progressively, we're out there and people, more people are finding out about us. So we're getting more news on our website. And then New York, otherwise, so now we're San Antonio, Corpus Christi College Station, Houston, Ranses Pass, Austin, Dallas, Plano, it was only before, Rockford, Portland. So I think being in the Dallas Sportworks Market is already showing you. And then these are, these are the tracking for inside the visitor center. It's kind of, you can't see it from here, but it's, it's going to be last year versus this year than this year. And in almost every category, we increase. I'll be happy to give you on copy some of this stuff, so I can see what we're getting under. And I couldn't print it. This is the new program for me, how I come down the center and stuff together for y'all. But everything on there, pretty much is increased, but the variances are up, they're not down. So I think we're doing really good in the visitor center. And pretty much the same thing, it's kind of our peak, end of peak, and you can see January through April, and then it drops down in October, December. But it goes back to July and August, and then June's the high, the highest point, so. And then this is our billboard impressions. These are billboards, again, these are only the billboards that we're doing with the city, with the Chambers contract, not with the city. The weekly impressions, if you take the Corpus Christi area and the market that we have between north and west, Eville and the valley, the weekly impressions are 97,000 per week, and then 125,000 up to date from January to June right now. And then the San Antonio one is the one behind that at 75,000, 755,000 impressions.
What do you mean when you say impressions?
That means the cars that are passing, that's all the text traffic.
The traffic, okay.
And then here's the fair accounts that we get every month. You know, I know this just got, if you look at June of last year, it was 233. I don't, I don't have a real reason other than I know that people are going around now because of the, you know, the shrimp and all that stuff. I don't know if that has something to do with cars coming this way versus that way, but I, I did notice that they dropped significantly. And I asked the lady at the text, she didn't have a real answer to that, I can see this. But these are only cars, this is not people. They average, you know, two to three hundred cars, those numbers are obviously way higher. This is just the travel. And then these, this is just the pictures of the shows that we do, the travel shows in Houston and in Dallas, and we do at this place, and then we give out all of the information for the city. The Dallas show brings in, I think it was eight thousand, or was it called? It was eight thousand and eight. People go to that show. And then the Houston one, obviously, it's like 16,000 visitors hit that, hit that show. And that's it for, for that part of it. And then I have the, y'all should have a copy of the budget. The budget will show that we are requesting 170,000. Last year, we received 180,000, but 10,000 of that, you'll see, the January to December, is the billboards. That was, we spent last year 10,100 on the billboards for the state. We, I think, asked for 14, but we didn't need all of the 14 because it's only based on if they even done and we even lined. So these 10, so that's why you see the 180. So we're asking for 170. Our budget is calling for 186. So obviously there's a deficit. We are aware of the Hawthorne still being down. We know that we will have to adjust our, our budget, and we'll just have to wait until the third quarter check comes, but we'll do it when we're at, because the way we operate at the Chamber, we pay all of the visitor centers through the Chamber of Commerce, and then when we get a quarterly check from the city, we reimburse ourselves. So it's always sort of behind. The city's not going to know what they have until they get that check, and we, we just simply can't wait to market it until we get a check. So we market, and then we'll scale back if, if we need to at the end of the year.
What was the budget projection that you guys were expecting?
Do you happen to have one of those copies that you gave me today? Do you happen to have one of those copies that you gave me today?
Shrimpery stuff?
Uh huh.
I have, yeah, I do. Bram had some questions about shrimpery and the expenses I did.
This is a lot easier.
Because I don't want y'all to get confused with shrimpery and, and the visitor center because it's totally separate, and your, your budget that I gave you does not have shrimpery in it. If you look at the sponsorship line item, do you have them? If you look at the sponsorship line item, it's 101,000. Those are all the business members and companies that sponsor it, including the state. They use $22,000 for the business department. And you'll see that under the expenses under your, under the administrative and general expenses, PD. Our bottom line for shrimpery this year was 111,000, and 101 of it was sponsorship. So if we don't have the members and the businesses that support our event and the city, we don't make very much money because it is a $300,000 event. And if you see where it's highlighted with that shrimpery expenses, on your second page, you're going to get a detail of that 160,000. That's a sort of catch-all for everything else. And if you turn it over, you'll see all of those expenses there on page.
So the 170 is, is not all we give the Chamber, correct? I mean, for the hot, we also give them extra for the shrimpery?
Yeah, I need to do that soon because I'm waiting till the beginning of the year to do that. Actually, we're going to have to do it here for permission to use the rounds and the, the PD. Yes, they're giving me $22,000 in support of shrimpery. And then we come back in February on the billboards and then.
So a total is, how much do, how much does the city give to the Chamber, the total, including the shrimpery and the billboards, and then plus the hotel and the total that we?
Well, to the Chamber, this is visitor center. So we have two tax on.
Okay. But total to the same building, how much is the total?
I mean, I don't have a calculator, but we figure 14,000 on the billboards, roughly add that to 22,000 on the PD for shrimpery, and then the Chamber.
What's the, I know we do in-kind for public works and fire. Do you have that number? Right about the same.
I would like to see the Chamber cover all the city workers working the shrimpery. Instead of city covering the, the regular time, the overtime. I'd like to see them cover the front of it.
So you would like for the city not to sponsor shrimpery at all?
I think it's sponsor, but not pay for it out of the pocket like it's been in the past. I'd like to see if it's a Chamber deal, if you don't want to pull Ranses off of it. But I'd like to see, instead of just paying the PD, I'd like to see the city works get paid also to the Chamber.
Well, we didn't pay them, the city pays.
The city pays the police department.
The city pays the police department, so.
They've always supported shrimpery by.
With the PD.
It's about, it's about 61, well, so the visitor center is 170. That's the hot fund that's funded. And then the, the billboard, well, let's even separate billboard because that's, that's something different. That's 14,000. And then shrimpery has 47,000 of city in-kind.
Which in the past was coming out of the hot fund portion that the city had, because it, you know, there's no doubt that this has been bad if, if it only is impacted as this town is astronomical. So they were able to do it through the hot funds, especially this year.
With the bar.
There was no, yeah, there were no hot funds, and so we took it out of the general plan item. Originally, it was, because we don't use hot funds for the shrimpery. We need pay for shrimpery, so we all the Chamber and the sponsors. So virtually, there's nothing coming out of shrimpery that's hot fund related, other than what the city.
We just need to, we just need to make a, we just make a, make a note for next year in terms of hot fund allocations, because the hot fund we're estimating at 250,000. And so 70% of that is 175, 75,000, and we need to make sure that 47 is allocated for city reimbursement for staff. But I remind you that we have people who come and ask for.
A piece here, a piece there.
And it dwindles quickly. We do have another hotel breaking ground very soon. We're meeting with them tomorrow, as a matter of fact. So there will be one additional hotel in the Hawthorne. It is actually, they were slated to be partially open. They've got some insurance issues of their own, and their parent company will be coming and taking over that hotel probably. So that one is slated to get up and running quickly as well. So the hot fund should start to increase and be a little bit healthier, but it's just a reminder of what we need to allocate to ourselves.
God forbid there's bars in this one.
After the 250, if we take out the, the allocation for 7,000 to cover the staff coverage, the 14,000 from the billboards, which also comes out of that fund, that leaves $9,000 in the hot fund to be able to allocate to like the Hany tournament and those tournaments that have come to request dollars.
Is that a whole lot left, right?
No, we did, we, we put $20,000 in discretionary in the council line item specifically for those types of requests.
Well, I personally think that the Chamber is a very big part of the city. I think that without the Chamber, I think that the city would have no promotion whatsoever.
Glad you feel that way because you're the president, huh?
Not sure. No, I'm not. No, I, I just can see what the Chamber really does, and I can see the people that come into town. Actually, I see them every day. I can see where, I, I know when there's a lot of people here, and I know when there's not a lot of people here.
We do work really hard for Ranses Pass, not just with the visitor center, but with the Chamber. We're always born and raised here, because it's my town, and I take it to heart when, you know, when we're doing stuff through this town. But we work really closely with the city. And so we can attest to that, and the Flight Center can do as well. But if we don't have a successful shrimpery, and we don't have a bottom line, we don't function as a Chamber. And if we don't function as a Chamber, we don't function as a visitor center, because we only get $57,000 in revenue up of our membership. The rest of it, shrimpery has to succeed, or we don't function. We have to close our doors, and then we, you know, we don't have, we don't have a building anymore, and we don't have what we do to the community for Ranses Pass. So I, you know, I, obviously, I work there, but I feel like, you know, the Chamber of Commerce is a very strong part of Ranses Pass. We need all the support we can get, specifically from the city.
But just so they understand that, 170 doesn't fund the shrimpery.
It does not fund it.
Well, I make a motion that we approve the, the contract. Really, we can approve the budget, it was just the contract.
Their, their line item is a part of our budget. And actually, we budgeted 175, they're only asking for 170, so.
So it's possible.
It'll be $5,000.
So $5,000 less. I move that we approve the budget and the contract with the Chamber.
I second the motion.
Oh, first say aye?
Aye.
I abstain. I'm not allowed to vote.
Can we suggest that we have a bigger?
Yes.
That's how we got it.
No, I couldn't even use a magnifying glass with my glass.
I bring us to item number 12, consider an act on proposed fees, which will be A, emergency medical services fee of $2.50, $2.50 attached to the City Ranses Pass Utility Bill. Item B, drainage fee of $2.50 or $3 attached to the City Ranses Pass Utility Bill. And item C, meter set fee for $100 affecting new construction.
Mayor Council, these are, these are part of the discussions we had at our last budget meeting in an attempt to balance the budget. There is an item that's missing that you will have to vote on at your next regularly scheduled meeting, and that is the utility rate fee. That is raising the consumption, overall consumption rate, which didn't show up as letter D on the item. We reviewed the drainage fee, and $2.50 is sufficient for the drainage fee, $2.50 for the emergency medical services, which will pay the EMS contract outright. And the meter set fee is really, when we have new construction and they do pre-taps, we don't charge a tap fee because obviously the contractor has done that, but we still go out and set the meter and do those things. So that $100 is recouping staff time. That development that we had was 70 meter sets that'll be made. So that's, and that is only going to affect new construction, it will not affect existing construction.
So we don't have a drainage fee period right now, do we?
Today, we do not. Today, we have an allocation, the San Pedro Show Drainage District charges a, an amount on the tax bills, and the city receives $80,000. So it's about $10.
So without, we could buy equipment to clean up all the dishes?
Yes, and that, that's what's proposed in the budget. If you'll recall, the, the budget presentation that we gave at the, at the last meeting has equipment. That $80,000 that is from the San Pedro Show Drainage District would pay for a jetter, a backhoe, an excavator, and a sweeper. That would pay those things over a set period of time. This drainage fee is more the overall maintenance and creating a master drainage plan and funding that portion of city operations.
Right now, we're looking to raise a total of five bucks to the utility bill, basically, right?
A total of $5 to the utility bill, which is in addition to the minimum, the minimum amount of the bill would also go up, the minimum, but you can't vote on that portion. The minimum amount for water. The, um, minimum amount for water, uh, would go up by two dollars and fifty cents, and the minimum amount for sewer would go up by four dollars. Uh, and the consumption rate would go up by, uh, forty cents. So the average residential unit here uses about five thousand gallons, so that's going to be the difference.
One of the biggest issues brought up to me too is the problem we're having operating the meters correctly. And then the bills being crazy as they are, and then we go back and now we're going to take more money on top of the bill we can't get right. Or we can, or can't, either way, we're having issues with.
Well, I think what it is, is there's old meters and as they get the brand-new meter, because they were actually getting more water. So when they get the new meter, there's a big difference and because they were actually getting more water than was actually getting built.
We're about, what percentage did you say in conversion?
Calibrated meters that actually can tell you what the water...
Converting to radio meters to get those accuracy.
Okay, now, e- ever since we got a, uh, a new meter, uh, we haven't had any complaints from the residents as far as, uh, having problems with the bills going up or down.
Sure we do.
Even with the radio?
Even with the new meters?
Sure we do, but, but we're able to tell people, we're, we're actually working on an alert program. We're actually able to tell people, you got a leak right now. That's how the whole housing authority issue came up. We were able to not only spot it on the, on the meter and then actually go on-site.
You can actually tell them when they use the most water.
Yeah, I can tell you when you're showering, I can tell you when you ran your dishwasher with the radio meters.
Well, I know that there was a lot of, uh, what, a lot of what we call dead meters, uh, in the, because I, we had one in our house that the bill was staying for about six months, and I know my husband was watering, and I was like, oh gosh, you got a whole bag of bills? And it didn't go up. So I called the city, I said, what's, what's going on, I, when do you read the meters? And that's how they discovered that my meter, probably about two or three years ago.
That we were averaging for a long time, that's...
Yes, and so, uh...
We did a rough calculation of, uh, you know, we relieved a, a staff member of their duties in, in that department when we found out meters weren't being read, and, and I have stories of residents who come show me pictures and say, there's no way my meter was read. And we estimated we've probably lost over fifteen million dollars over the last two decades of consumption that is lost through, uh, an inaccurate, an average, or a, a broken meter.
And what's sad is the fact that we were still being billed.
Oh, of course, we have to pay the San Trisho, uh, Water District. You know, whether, whether we bill you or not, there is still a, a, a large amount of loss that we're trying to account for. We still have a lot of areas in the city where houses used to be, especially up on the harbor, that have infiltration, where there's old, um, sewer taps and things as well. And to, to the water cost has been a lot less, and our sewer plant is in, is going to be in some serious need of repair. We've done the study against cities around us, and our increases would still bring us lower than surrounding cities.
And I'm looking at these fees being reinvested back into the city, as we're using it for...
Absolutely, they're, they're in the water sewer funds. Um, well, if you think the emergency services fee goes immediately to, um, our emergency services provider. And we've gone over that time and time again. There's no way we're going to fund an EMS ambulance, two boxes out of here, for less than a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. There's no way we're going to do that. Um, the drainage fee, if you haven't seen the, the work we've done around Arch Street and things just to get our drainage going, um, I know people think it's dry, but I swear if you go drive by the harbor, you're going to see those ditches have water because there is a lot of surface drainage here. So it's an attempt to not only keep up, but also correct things that are going to have us drained in a major storm event. The last money we used from the drainage district replaced all of our, uh, drainage pumps that had not been replaced in decades. Um, and I, I'm very glad that we got them fixed before we had a major storm event. Not only are they now automatic, they're better operating pumps, and we were able to salvage the other pumps and use them as backup, which we didn't even have a backup and they were all manual pumps. So, I mean, it's, it is a work in progress. I understand that, um, additional fees are never, ever, ever a good thing. Um, but we're trying to balance that by not raising the tax rate, so... The, and I'll, I'll tell you, the other, the other component that we've talked about is the industrial districts, and we're already working with Allen and know what we need to do in terms of dissolving those and, um, getting that revenue back into the city.
Is there any way we can stagger, stagger the building or, so don't hit them all at once? Like in increments or yet to start off all at one point?
Well, we can, we can certainly look at staggering, what that's going to do is it's going to postpone the purchase of that equipment.
What would that be, what would that make the average, I mean, just the average water bill or the minimum water bill you have?
Well, right now, our minimum bill is sixteen dollars, so I, I don't have that, I don't have it in front of me. Right now, you, you could basically see your utility bill increase about ten dollars a month.
Yeah.
With the additional fees and...
I, I would just, I just wanted to see what the, what would be the minimum water bill to affect, uh, all the... For the fixed income.
Let's find out together. We have a handout, um... This industrial waste. JP, will you grab a, uh, the handout that we give, um, folks on... So, most folks for senior residential, for example, um, most folks, the minimum fee is nine dollars and fifty-two cents for water. For most folks inside the city limits, the minimum fee is twelve dollars and fifty-eight cents for water. So that fee would go up by two dollars and fifty cents, uh, for sewer. The, um, minimum is eight dollars and thirty-eight cents, so that would go up by four dollars to twelve dollars and thirty-eight cents. So twelve dollars and thirty-eight cents for sewer and add, um, two dollars and fifty cents to twelve fifty-eight fourteen, so less than forty dollars for the minimum. That's just for water sewer, uh, and then you take the garbage into account. So you're looking at about a fifty-five dollar utility bill. Plus the two, the, the two-fifty and the two-fifty, sixty dollars. Council could direct us to not increase the utility bills, but I remind you, we had a two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand dollar shortfall. So we'd have to find that, um, by cutting more of the budget.
I know it's, as, um... It's a difficult motion, but I make a motion that we go ahead and pass the, uh, the emergency medical fee for two-fifty, the drainage fee for two-fifty, and the set meter, the set, the meter set fee of a hundred dollars affecting the new construction. Knowing where the city is at and what we need the funds for, um, it's, it's a difficult motion, but I make that motion that we approve this.
I second the motion.
All of us say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, it would be me.
I'll bring us to item number thirteen, public hearing.
Mr. Lawrence? Thank you, thank you, Mayor, this is a public hearing on the proposed Rans' pass fiscal year 2014-2015 budget and the 2014-2015 proposed effective tax rate. Sylvia, you and Donna want to address this, please?
Um, this is, the, the city proposal overall is, uh, to keep the current tax rate at point six-eight-zero-three-five-four. Maintenance and operations portion of the tax rate is, um, both of the maintenance and operations and the debt service are sustained. We have not, we had additional valuation of about ten million dollars, um, not enough to, to create a major dent, but that is just one increase, and so hopefully those, those ten million dollar increases start to become exponential. If we adopt a lower tax rate, obviously, it also becomes a budget shortfall and we'll have to find, we'll have to find the dollars. The, the combined, uh, leaving the same tax rate creates two-hundred-and-sixteen thousand dollars of additional income, which was absorbed, um, in the budget. If you look at, the overall budget for the city is, um, sixteen point one million dollars. And, uh, in discussion with the bond council, um, we did not have a reserve policy. This is the first year that we are allocating two-hundred thousand dollars into reserve, which is an emergency fund. While the city's bottom line is healthy, we don't have a set stipulated unencumbered reserve. What you see on the, um, finance statements is if we were to liquidate, um, certain things. So I, I'm open to any questions. We can go over detail by detail for each of the departments, I, I'm open to any questions.
Any questions, brother counsel?
So we're proposing to raise taxes, right?
No.
No, we're not. Just leave it alone. That's why, that's why we did the water bill.
That way, everybody can pay, not just property owners. Everybody that rents gets an equal, equal pay.
Equal push, yeah.
Because if you rent, you don't pay taxes, the owner does, you don't.
Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments in regard to the budget? Anything else by the council?
No.
Then I'd clear the public hearing floor.
Bring us to item room fourteen, city manager update.
Well, I, I, I gave you a handout on, uh, activity down at City Hall. The most important update is we are, uh, creating a citizens academy. I think it's important for our residents to understand what we do at City Hall, and in an effort to be transparent, we want to create classes of twenty-five or thirty people, ideally twenty-five, who can come in, um, have a presentation by not only myself, but each of the department heads, have an opportunity to tour the departments, have an opportunity for ride-alongs with police, fire, even our public works people. I want everybody to, to really, really understand that our staff works tremendously hard with the limited resources that they've been given over a very, very long period of time. This is the first year they've ever managed their own budget, and, uh, our prior finance director really felt like they couldn't manage it and they would, they would overspend it, and they didn't. They're, they're well below budget, so that this year, we're going to have money to fall into reserves and, and keep driving our credit rating up. The more we borrow, the less interest we pay, and it's a savings altogether. By putting in that reserve policy this year, we were able to save the City of Rans' pass probably a million dollars over the course of that note. And that's, that's not a small feat to do, but it takes us all being fiscally responsible. And so I want our residents to understand what we do here, and I'm open to ideas, suggestions, a better way to build the widget, a better way to get from point A to point B, absolutely. Everything we do is transparent, everything is on the shared drive. If I'm not in the office and we have an open records request, it's there, any member of the staff can access that information. I just want our residents to be comfortable enough to know that we're being very good stewards, as best stewards as we can of the equipment, finances, dollars that we're given.
You got the rest of your updates. We, we continue with our code enforcement push, um, not, not the easiest, uh, points in terms of, uh, cleaning up, presenting a better image for, uh, attracting development into the city. We are also moving on, on a street inventory, one of the things we asked for in the budget was street equipment. And so we're going to start taking that street inventory of worst, uh, streets and, and creating a plan to do that. Um, this year, we were able to dump in not only the, um, hundred-and-ten thousand dollars that, uh, we said we were going to dump into, but also some extra monies, um, to the tune of about two-hundred thousand dollars going towards street improvements. And that's for base, that's for the actual material that goes into the streets. And I know that is a big, big, big issue of why some of the development doesn't happen as fast as it does. But I'm really, really of the opinion that as soon as we open up piling in those things that were passed with the bond, that engine just continues to rev up. I think we owe some of our longstanding residents some services, um, and so we're, we're fast pushing to get those services, and it is just going to take a concentrated effort. The code enforcement part is to make sure that as we make a push and we add to development and, and we get the streets and we get those things, that everybody's property around isn't negatively impacted by, uh, a development, a developer, an owner who has not kept up their end of the deal by keeping their property clean and up to par. It's not an easy job, and I don't envy Michael, but they're Cameron, and so, you know, we continue to push that. We are going to have another, um, community cleanup day as well. We had another, we had one in the summer, we're going to push one in the fall. Um, it's an opportunity in the contract to get free trash service, um, and our collection station continues to be free for our residents and continue to push that, um, incentive to, uh, to keep your property clean. The other thing is we are going to be pursuing, uh, an RFP for the Aquatic Center for privatization. Uh, I want to just listen to what's out there. Maybe there's a better way to do it than what we're doing it. In fact, I know there's got to be a better way because we're losing, we're losing a lot of money there, and it is a jewel. And the, the chamber's right, they have stepped up and they've offered some of their tourism stuff to try to get us to, um, incent that revenue and send people to come in and, and buy the things that we think are minimal, the, the diapers and the towels and those kinds of things. But also some food stuff out there, and so how do we do that? What's the best way to do that? Right now, we don't have the capacity or the capability because we're running short on lifeguards. You know, we only pay our lifeguards eight dollars, so Portland steals them, you know, the, the other communities steal them. So we're having to go out to... So we're having to go out to...